Smith. And this is the city, the regular city council meeting for July the thirteenth, twenty twenty. We want to welcome all our guests tonight as well as the KJIW and now West Hall of World, Kennedy and anybody. The other media. I didn't miss anybody, but if I did, we will welcome everybody. Ms. Sandy Coler, Colerow.
Davis.
Here.
Saint Columbia. Crockett. Franklin.
Present.
Etherly. Forward.
Here.
Saint Columbia.
Here, here.
Crockett. We have four.
Right. All right, well, the looks like we have a quorum, so we're going to get started on the agenda. And the first item would be the minutes from May eighteenth. Ms. Ramsey, how do you want to handle these? Do it all at once or individually?
We have to do them individually.
Okay, so the copies of the minutes were in your packet. The first item, the first minute, or by the eighteenth.
I move, we accept those minutes of May eighteen as printed.
So Mr. Saint Columbia makes that option of minutes by the eighteenth. Is there a second? Anyone want to second the motion to adopt the minutes for May eighteenth? We have. Everybody here. Do we have enough people? We were at the meeting. Anybody want to second the motion?
Second.
Is that Ms. Davis?
It is.
Okay, motion made in second. Any questions or comments about the? Motion? If not, call row.
Saint Columbia. Franklin.
Yes.
Crockett. Davis.
Yes.
Forward, forward.
Forward, absolute abstain.
Etherly. Saint Columbia.
Yes, yes.
Okay, Smith.
Yes.
I'd make it four.
Motion passes. Adopt the minutes by eighteenth and next item would be the minutes from May twentieth. It's again in your packet. Anybody want to make a motion for? Is that Mr. Franklin?
Franklin, Franklin.
Okay, I think, I think Mr. Franklin moved and I'm just like, let me say to the motion, any discussion or questions about the motion? If not, call the row.
Franklin.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Etherly. Forward.
Yes.
Crockett. Saint Columbia.
Yeah.
Four, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next item on the agenda is, are the minutes from June the first? Is there a motion to adopt the minutes from June first?
Don't move, don't move.
Mr. Franklin moves adoption of the minutes from June first. Is there a second?
I'll. Back, back.
I was a little garbled here, but I'm going to say, Mr. Saint, let me second the motion.
You're pretty confident in.
Comments, if not, call the row.
Forward.
Yes.
Etherly. Franklin.
Yes.
Crockett.
Yes.
Saint Columbia.
Yes, yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Four, yes.
Thank you. Motion passes for adoption. The next item is, are the minutes from June the fifteenth?
I would see if.
Is there a motion? Mr. Franklin moves that we adopt the motion of the minutes from June fifteenth. Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Davis seconds the motion. Any other questions or comments? If not, call row.
Saint Columbia.
Yes, yes.
Franklin. Mr. Franklin. Crockett. Davis.
Yeah.
Forward.
Yes.
Etherly. Mr. Franklin. Smith.
Yes.
Four, yes.
Motion.
Yes, yes, yes.
I got you, Mr. Franklin. Thank you.
The last item on the agenda, I mean, I'm sorry, on the minutes. Or clarify the minutes, the first twenty twenty. Ms. Ramsey, you want to discuss, do you want to discuss that, Ms. Ramsey?
It was, I neglected to go in and change the increased rates on the pandemic. And we just need to clarify it.
Is there a motion to adopt a clarification of the minutes for December first twenty twenty?
Second.
Mr. Franklin moves. Ms. Davis takes the motion for adoption of the clarification of the minutes. Any questions or comments about the clarification? Or the motion? If not, call row.
Saint Columbia.
Yeah.
Crockett. Forward.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Uh, yes.
Motion passes. Thank you very much, and that should do it for the minutes. So we're going to move. On to the action items on the agenda. The first thing up, Mr. Turner, will be the treasures report. You recognized.
Okay. I don't have a full treasure report. This is, I guess, we moved the first meeting. To this week, I tried to have one. I have most of the funds completed, but I lack one. Statement from our street fund debt service. So rather than just give you that entire report, without that report, I'll just wait. Maybe in a couple of days, I'll get that, that statement in, and I can get you guys a complete treasure report. At the next scheduled council meeting, I think that's next Tuesday anyway. But for now, for quickly, I wanted to discuss the general fund. I did send the council members. A copy of the financial report for the general fund. So I just want to quickly briefly just go over that for a second. And as of June thirtieth through the first half of the year. The city had one hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-six dollars in cash available. Through the first half of the year. And we actually had a gain in operations of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Two hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and sixty-four thousand dollars. And that gain. From operations, if you look on page. Eleven. And you look in that second column that's headed January twenty twenty through June twenty first, you will actually see. The gains or losses in operations that the city experiences. So it's reflecting a two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar gain in operations. For the city throughout the first half of the year. And that two hundred and eighteen thousand dollar gain. Comes on even.
I think we lost there, Derek, at the end. Well, can anybody else hear him? Or is it just me?
I, I, I can hear him.
You can?
I, I did. I don't now.
I cannot hear you.
He, he went off, it looked like.
Yeah, he might have hit his mute button by mistake.
He's off the screen.
Somebody want to message him? Let him know. Oh, he's off the screen too?
Yeah. I don't see him.
Well, I didn't say, I didn't know if he was.
He's rejoining now.
There you are.
All right, there you are, there you are.
Also. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, I, I don't know. I'm at the office, so you know, we've been having some internet. Problems throughout today. But like.
We can hear you, and I think where you. Left off was the, the two hundred and eighteen thousand for operations amounts.
Okay.
For six months of the year, and then you were about to say something. I think that's what we lost.
Okay, so throughout the first half of the year, we, we have an operating. Gain from operations of two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, a little over two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Now that is despite us being a little bit behind projections and our revenues. We're actually like one point six five percent behind projections, which amounts to about. A hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars behind revenue projections, but. Most of that is due to not receiving our property tax. And so you know that they've been having some issues over at the county and they just had a replacement. County treasurer, and so we're still working with them to try to get up to speed or caught up on our. Property tax revenues that are due to the city. So that's, that's, that's part of, that's the main reason why we're behind revenues, revenue projections. But despite that, we're still operating. At two hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in deposits so far this year. And also we're, as far as the expenses are concerned, we're. Four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars on the budget on the expenditures. So we're doing pretty good with managing the money, spending money. As well. And so. Just considering all of those things, we have, and I know last week, the council, they were considering giving us raises and. Increasing base pay and things of that nature. They were concerned with whether we could afford certain things. I was telling them that. The way I determine whether we can afford something going forward, particularly if it's not something that's a one-time payment. Depending upon how much cash we have in the bank. But if it's something that's going to go on for the remainder of the year or into future years, what I look at. Is whether we have a budget surplus or a budget deficit. And so considering. All of the budget increases and changes in appropriations, which were budget increases and budget cuts to salaries. And the, the sky cops and all the other things that they've added and things that they've cut. They still have a budget surplus of a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. And they can see that if they look on page eleven of the general fund report that I sent them, it's, it's at the last page, and it's that last number you're going to see at the bottom. And anytime you want to know if we can afford something, particularly if it's going to be throughout the remainder of the year, or if it's for an entire year. That's the number that I would look at. It's kind of like telling you how much income you have coming in. The projections are the income you have coming in and expenditures are your expenses, like your household expenses, whereas mortgages, condos, utilities. And so that, 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 that number, that change in fund balance in the. Budget column kind of lets me know how much we can afford and. Increases to the budget. And so right now, it looked, it's showing that we can afford an additional a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in. Appropriations. So if it's something they want to add to the, to the budget, they have about a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars that they can. Play.
Hi, Derek.
As far as that, as far as I can see, I don't, I don't foresee anything. I mean, we're operating pretty good right now, and I don't foresee anything that'll change. We, we'll probably end up. Doing pretty well this year. Particularly if we can get the property tax revenue from the county.
Hi, Derek. That was actually going to be my question. What would that, what was that, what would that hundred and eighty-seven thousand look like with? Well, conservatively speaking, with. The property tax revenue.
Well, that, that hundred and eighty-seven thousand represents the budget. So it's not actual revenue received. That, that reflects the budget. That reflects projected revenues. Minus the. Approved appropriations that the council, yeah, yeah. And now the appropriations. And so it's showing how much they have authorized the city to spend. And so you take, take the, the projected revenues and you take away their approved appropriations, that leaves a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars more that they can appropriate. For whatever they need to salary increases, equipment. Supplies, whatever else they, they feel to increase those appropriations for. So that's why I said they can, they can afford another hundred and thousand. Dollars in appropriations for anything that they feel that. They feel necessary that the city may need.
In the general fund.
The general fund, yes. I'll, I'll give them update. Hopefully it'll be at the next council meeting, which I think is next week, on the twenty, the twentieth. And so hopefully I have that final financial statement by the end, I can give them a complete. Treasure. And, 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 yes.
Miss, I'm sorry, Mr. Turner. The mayor can finish up. I just got a couple of questions when the mayor finishes.
Yes, sir. You say you have them now. You want to wait for the mayor to finish. What'd you say?
Well, I'm finished. Go ahead, go ahead, Mr. Turner.
Mr. Turner, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Turner. The, the question that I got, now, we have not have, have gotten all our expenditures in for the month, right? This hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars actually is what it looks like as of today, right?
Well, the hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars is the budget. So whatever appropriations you passed. On January twenty seventh to twenty eighth, plus whatever changes that you made to the budget throughout the year. Regarding the salary increases, you made some salary decreases. Sky cops and other things that you've added or taken from the budget. That one eighty-seven reflects how much in appropriations that you have left, considering the projected revenues. So it's not actual, it's not the actual rev, it's not the actual expenditures. Now, if you want to know the actual expenditures, you will have to look in that second column. That second column is the actual results for January through June. And so those numbers, that number is. I mean, that number is three point four million dollars, right? So we're. Actually, we've had three point four million dollars in expenditures through June. And so if you take half of the budget. Half of the budget would be. One second. Half of the budget for that year would be. Three point eight million dollars, three. Billion eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand dollars. Four hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars under budget right now, actual results.
That's current.
That's current, that's as of June, that's as of. We're four hundred and seventy-eight thousand on the budget.
Okay.
So, Mr. Turner.
All the ra, just considering all the raises, the sky cops and everything else that you've added to the budget. And taking out of the budget. When you make those changes, I do those changes right there and there, so they're reflected in the next treasure report.
Right, so Mr. Turner, my question is this, since we have a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, I got, I got some questions. So we're under, you know, you said make appropriations for other things. Well. My question is this, I know, and Mayor, if you can, if you can chime in, how many? Full-time officers that we have? On salary right now? Because see, last time we had this question, we said, we had a hundred and, no, we had a million and some dollars because we didn't have enough officers. And a million and some dollars, sorry, because we didn't hire enough officers. Well, if we understaffed, if we understaffed the officers, those are salaries. If we understaffed in the street sanitation department, that's, that's some of that money. If we, the landfill has lost a couple of employees. So that's some of that money that we still have to replace those individuals. So it, it is a savings as of now. But when you put, when you staff those people back up, that becomes. You know, what it is, because how many officers do we have, full-time officers, part-time? How many officers do we have altogether? I know the budget, how much, how many officers of the budget?
Let me tell you now, yeah, in the budget, you, you actually budgeted for twenty-five officers in the budget.
Right, right. So it would, it would reflect, it would reflect the expenditures if we do not have the, the officers. It would look like. There's a surplus if we don't have the twenty-five officers that we are slotted for, right? That's how we had gotten the one point, the one point two million dollars that we had because we were not staffed. Right? And we have a, we have a lot of other employees who are not working. So yes, this money. Is there because we've had people to quit, move off, leave the city. So we, we have slots that we, we could deal. But we can't get the people because if I'm correct, we're starting advertising for positions. Am I correct?
Yeah, a lot of those savings are due to the fact that, you know, when you budgeted, you budgeted for twenty-five officers. So obviously, we have. We haven't had twenty-five officers. I think we have eighteen. Right now. And so, yeah, some of that, some of that reason for us being under budget, some of it is due to. Lack of filling all the positions.
Yes, sir. And, and, and that's why I want our listening audience to understand that, you know. And I'm not disputing the treasure, but I thank you, Mr. Turner, for going through it, and I think that. We did this, set aside a meeting. Once a month, so, and publish these. The financial report on the city's page so that the citizens can see what is going on. I thank you for being thorough with your report. But those are some of the things that I'm concerned about. I know it looks like, and I'm, we actually have the funds, but we also are down officers. I think there's people in the street department that we need to hire, sanitation department, and the landfill. And I see that we got, looking at hiring a parks and recreation person. So we have to take this in consideration that. We have lost a lot of people and we're still advertising to pay people and also human resource person as well. So we need to look at that. And I can say, Mr. Trevor, I'm done. I thank you for your report. I would like to, I would like to see if we could have a. A meeting a month with you so you can, let, let us go line by line, item by line, item, look at the budget so we can stay. In the, in positive.
Yes, sir, Mr. Franklin. And like I said, I'm, I'm open, you know, I've always been open to meeting with you guys anytime that, that you want to, so. That's okay with me. Once a month, whenever you guys decide you want to meet and go over these finances, that's fine with me. But I would also like to add that even if we had been fully staffed in the police department, we still probably, we would have been under budget. Because there are some other items that we, we just haven't been spending a lot of money on. So.
Yes, sir.
Wouldn't have been as big of a surplus. But we, we, we would have been on, we would have still been on the budget.
Yeah, yes, sir. And I, and I, and I believe that, but we still have not hired a human resource person. We still not, we still not hired. With Mr. Jones came last week and said we needed to. Hold on, wait, wait, let me stop. If that's the case, we would look at the C D L drive, you all were looking at it, to give them. Twenty-dollar raise. So we, we acted. Look at the police department. Can't feel. Twenty-five slots, some kind of city to get offices here, and people are looking to, also being looking to increase the police department. Those people are there. We need to try to have a meeting to discuss how can. We, ready?
Mr. Franklin, you're going in and out.
I have a question. Mr. Franklin. Mr. Franklin, I'm going to take a question from Saint Columbia, and then we'll, we'll go back.
So that is to the next agenda, so we can see how we can raise people up so we can be in a competitive market.
Mr. Saint.
Franklin, let, let me, let me kind of bring something to your attention, though. When you, you talk about police. Increasing the, 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 the staff on the police, you, you actually have twenty-five officers in the. Budget. And so it's just simply, if you, if they make the promotions, when they start doing the promotions, they will, they can gain. Seven additional patrolmen, but the patrolmen that are in the positions now have to be promoted. So once those guys are promoted to these. Other positions, that, that will open up seven additional positions. They will open up six positions. You have one more position that's available in patrol, in that patrol officer class right now. You have sixteen positions, well, you have fifteen, but you budgeted for sixteen. And so. Taking into account that one patrol officer and the, the two. Well, actually, three. Well, the, 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 the two additional. Officers that you can promote, then, you know, that you can get up to about seven, seven additional officers.
Mr. Turner, excuse me, Mayor.
Mr. Franklin, you're, you're going in and out. Let me, Mr. Saint, let me have.
I wouldn't say more.
Mr. Franklin, we can't hardly hear you. We're going to let Mr. Saint, let me ask his question, and we'll come back to you. Go ahead.
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Okay, uh, Mr. Turner. I think generally what you're trying to bring out is a point that we have a surplus, and even if. Apparently, with all the, of the actuaries that we've required of them. We still have a surplus, but not as maybe, but we, we have a surplus. Is that correct?
We, we have a budget.
Right.
Budget surplus because you haven't appropriated all of the projected revenues. And when I project my revenues, I'm pretty conservative, and so chances are we're going to exceed the projections. Particularly when the property tax begins to come in, and we're already ahead of projections on sales tax. And so I'm thinking we're going to exceed projections, but when we're talking about the budget, it's actually not projection on revenue and the appropriations that you have made.
Right.
And that is a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars, yes, sir, so you.
I, I, I understand that. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, before we. Any other questions about the budget, and then we'll come back to you. You know, I mean, not the budget, I'm sorry, the treasures report. Before we go back. Any other council members have any questions? On the treasures report? We're not leaving the discussion. I'm just talking about the treasures report right now. Okay, Mr. Franklin, go ahead.
Thank you. What I was saying, I wasn't asking about adding any more officers. What I was saying, you know, we could be competitive with the pay. To try to see how could we get more, more people to apply. If we only have seventeen, and we, and the budget is twenty-five. We, we want to get, want to see how can we, with the incentive of getting people here, can we raise what? With the incentive of getting people here, can we raise what the starting pay is? That was my concern, not to say we wanna, Mr. Turner, not to add more to the budget, but if we can. Look at how we can cut something to give an incentive, uh, like, you know. Then, I think we, we can with eleven dollars and we can bump it up to like thirteen dollars. And move the, and move the other people that were troubled first class or whatever, second class, whatever the next rank is, to move them up. To give people an incentive to wanna come here. It is, it's not much, but I know, uh, I looked at Forest City, but they're starting up, they're starting up at thirteen dollars. That would, that would better help us if we had a, a better starting pay. And then, you know, we could start working with the people that, that are within the department as a promotion wise. To see what's the promotion test is given, to give our employees that incentive, but to give people who are already trying to come into the department. Some kind of incentive, and then try to work, try to start, try to see what can we do with the local businesses and see how, would they help us, you know, with. That's like double quick Wendy's, McDonald's, things like that. See what kind of incentive would they give us for our officers as well? I'm done.
Any other questions, Mr. Turner? Go ahead, Mr. Turner.
I was just saying, all this stuff, we can discuss all those things, all those items. Like you said, when you wanna have a monthly, uh, financial. Works, I guess, uh, we can discuss all of those things there. And it's probably, it'll probably be better because. Things aren't, things that you can kind of, uh, figure out. In a two-hour city council, you know, these kind of things take some research and some, some thought process into it. And so whenever you guys decide that you want to be together and discuss the city's finances, that's, just let me know.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Turner. Other questions from the council? This point. We're probably gonna revisit some of this if we get to it in, in later in the meeting also, but. Um, okay, we'll move, move on to the next item on the agenda. Mr. Jones, are you on yet?
Well, well, Mr., well, Mayor.
Yeah.
Well, the next item on the, I want to, uh, ask if they wanted to, uh, well, one of the issues was about my salary, increase my salary.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
One of the things I asked.
I apologize. I was, I just saw a treasurer's report. You're, you're, go ahead. Well.
That's.
I'll introduce that. I'm sorry, the salary discussion, I think we left off last time, a discussion of raises. And down on the agenda, I believe somewhere. Uh, is the twenty-dollar hour increase for C D L drivers. Which, um, we can discuss at the end of it. Last time we brought that up along with. Um, the request for the treasurer's, um, raise at the same time. And I think, y'all correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's where we left it, if I'm not mistaken. But I'm gonna introduce it that way and open it up for discussion.
Yeah, well, what happened was that they wanted to know if we could afford it, uh, so we, I went back over the, uh, well, someone made a motion. And it wasn't second because they didn't have the information that they needed, particularly whether we could afford it or not. Uh, and, uh, said earlier, uh, if you look at the budget surplus. We have, we've made a lot of cuts to the, to the budget and they've made some additions, even though, and they also made, uh, salary increases. For a few people, and despite all of that, they still, we still have a, uh, budget surplus of a hundred eighty-seven thousand dollars. And so, and like I mentioned earlier, that, that would be enough to cover the raises that they want to give for, if they wanted to give a raise to me. Uh, increase the, uh, base pay for the C D A drives. And also I think they had considered increasing, uh, salary for the foreman as well. And so after reviewing, and the question was asked, could we afford it? And I'm telling them that, uh, based on my analysis and looking at the financial statements through the first half of the year. Uh, the city could afford to, uh, increase appropriations for those items in the, in the budget. And also additionally, we, we, like I said, we've cut, we're under budget right now. Uh, I expect expenditures to, to, to increase over the course of the year. Uh, so even adding, increasing my salary, the foreman and increasing the salary for the. Uh, in my opinion, any financial harm, and we could afford it as far as the budget is concerned.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Go ahead.
Mr. Turner, now, I want, I wanna be clear about something. Now, as of right now, Mr. Mayor, I have no, my only problem that I have is this. With the crime in this area and fire, the C D L drivers, that, that's a good thing. But, Mr. Turner, I would agree to that, which is to change a couple of things. I would agree to this. This is just me, I'm one vote, but I would agree that we look at your salary and, uh. And the, uh, the, uh, forums right now. That's what I consider. Reason why with crime. It would, it'd be, it'd kind of be, I know we only dealing with a couple of people. But with the crime, you look at police and fire. You wanna make sure that those people are, are well taken care of. Now, I, I, I would, I would put it in a motion if, if the body would agree. That we need to look at police, fire and C D L drivers, but first of all, we look at police and fire as a, as to get them together. Because we, we got a product, kind of, we've not counted, we have a high crime area here in, in West Elm. And I wouldn't want to be said that we took care of other, we take care of those people who are, are first responders and frontline. I'm not knocking the, 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 the C D L drivers because we need them as well. But in Forest City, they start their C D L drives out at fourteen seventy-five an hour. We're going to twenty, and I, I'm not, I'm not saying I'm not with it, but I, we need to make sure while we have this surplus, Mr. Turner. That we, that we have, we need to look at this. We need, I, tho- those, uh, foremen. Should be paid because I don't want to be hit with a lawsuit on that. And then we have you. We need to set a meeting aside to go ahead and try to see, just like you went thoroughly through this, uh, treasurer's report. We need that to make some determination on how, what can we afford to give police, fire and sanitation. Twenty dollars is a lot. We need to try to be how, see, what's the happy medium for police, fire and. And, uh, C D L drivers. Because we need, we need, we need fire, we need police and we need C D L drivers. Now, those, you and those, uh, foremen. Uh, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm for that. Uh, I'm for that. So if, if, if we, if the body decides, I mean, that's what I'm for right there in that, in that order. In that, uh, uh, whatever the body's pleasure is, I'm with it, but as of right now, that's what I, I would consider that we do right now. You and, uh, foremen to take care of it and then see, co- come back and see. We can do it next week at the next meeting, come back and see. When you go through your report again, when you go through your report, how does that, those three salaries, how would then impact, in, impact, uh, the budget? No, the, uh, the, what you call, uh, expenditures then.
Okay, and, and, and Mr. Franklin, I'd like to also add that I think that the initial request for the. Uh, C D L drivers were seventeen dollars an hour, and I think during the meeting someone brought up twenty dollars. But I think the initial request by, uh, Mr., the, the Public Works Director was seventeen dollars. And I think someone else mentioned twenty along the line where.
I, I, Mr. Turner, I am on.
Yes, sir. I understand, I understand it, Mr. Turner. I do understand that with the seventeen. But do you understand where I'm coming from? I understand.
Yes, sir.
I understand the need for C D L drivers, but when you look at the pay of a starting officer, when you look at pay on a firefighter. Those are, I gotta be a little concerned that our people will start saying, hey, maybe I need the police department to go drive the garbage truck, get a C D L license. So wanna make it competitive for our people, we need to figure out a breakdown of how can we get everybody to a happy point, a, a good starting point. And the people who are there are ready to see how can we bring them up so they won't come in, we won't have the same problem that we had in district court. People are getting the same salary just coming in, only been there six months, you make it with a person that's been there five years. How can we fix this problem? Am I making sense, what I'm saying to you, Mr. Turner?
Yeah, yeah, you made completely, Franklin, I just wanted to, to let you know that the initial request for the C D L drivers was seventeen dollars.
And, and, and. Yes, sir, and I understand it, but what I'm, what, what, it brings some concerns to me that we have police and fire, Mr. Turner. Who go to.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, we need, we, what we need to do is look at the situation. I'm not saying nobody, you say we gotta, you know, the, but, black and white should we have a surplus. I wanna make sure that the, the, the police and fire, you know, I want them to be at a starting point. It's like we're gonna start, uh, at seventeen or twenty dollars. We can get off. We can look at, look at this and see how can we.
I think we're, we're starting to lose you again.
I'm, I'm sorry. Can you hear me better now? I apologize. Can you hear me better now?
Yeah.
So I wanna make sure that we are, we're not, you know, because what, we, we gotta take care of everybody. But we need to be fair with the practice of this. We, 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 this is the second time we raised. Am I right, Mr. Turner? It's been the second time we raised C D L drivers. If we do it this time, it would be the second, second time. Or possibly third, I'm not, I'm not knocking anybody for advocating for their people, but police and fire. Even we, we got the water department, we got to come and do. So we got a lot of issues we have to, we need to see prioritize this the right way. To make sure that, if we take, the police chief should be here to explain, hey, this is what I like. The police chief should be here saying, this is what I, is he on? Well, he should be here saying, this is what I would like for my officers as a starting pay, so we can get some more officers. Because we got seventeen and, and, and the starting point is twenty-five. And I'm, I'm for, I'm for whatever, but like I said, Mr. Turner, I'm for the, uh, right now, at this point, right now, in, in my life. I, I'm for the you and the foremen. So, I mean, I, I'm with that right now, and if you can get us the, the numbers together on how. Which way we, what we can give police, what we can give fire, and how can we make the senate, the C D L drivers, uh, as a starting pay comfortable? So we can still have a, a little piece of cushion because we have losses and things like that that come to the city. That we have to make sure we can pay these losses. Am I correct, Mr. Turner?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll give police chief and the fat, and the public works director, and I will give with those guys.
But, but, Mr. Turner, hold on just a second. Mr. Franklin, so you agree with, you agree with the. Uh, raise for the treasurer and for the two foremen?
Yes, sir. Well, man, I have, I'm so moved.
Are you willing to put that in a motion tonight and we can take these one at a time as we get to them?
I just did, Mayor. So moved. I moved to the treasurer and the two foremen. The foreman, uh, what I would like to look for, the foreman, we should actually look back. Because when we gave the foreman at the landfill, we gave him that page starting up. So I would like to look and see, can we, uh, see, ask the city clerk or the treasurer, how far can we go back? To retroactive their pay and asking, Mr. Turner, is well. Is it, can we go three weeks or, or a month?
I have a question.
But before we move on, what is, what is your motion? There's a motion on the floor. What exactly is your motion? I mean, you made a motion. I need to know what exactly.
To, to, uh, take care of treasures, to make sure, get the treasures raised in the two foremen.
So you're moving, you're making a motion, Mr. Franklin moves that we give a raise for the treasurer, for the two foremen. Do you wanna put numbers on that?
I'm, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, yes.
Mr. Turner, can you give, give us those numbers from the last time?
Yeah, I have a request to move from forty-seven, what, I can't remember exactly, forty-seven something to sixty. That would be about twelve thousand dollars. Uh, the foreman would, would, were requesting to be. Um, forty-five to fifty, uh, in line with, uh, landfill deputy director.
Mr. Turner, what's the title on the, on yours, police?
Uh.
I'm sorry, I know that's awkward for you, but.
Twelve thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars.
Twelve, say that again, twelve thousand what?
Twelve thousand eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars. The other two would be five thousand dollars apiece. They're, they're moving from forty-five to fifty.
Okay, let's deal with the motion first. Uh, so, Mr. Franklin, is your motion that we approve, uh, a res, that we. That the council approves a resolution to increase the city treasurer's salary twelve thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars per year? And the two deputy directors of public works, uh, to five thousand dollars a year?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
If you, if he, is there a second to the motion? Let me just ask that.
Second.
Mr. Crockett seconds the motion. Okay. Any questions or comments about the motion? This, this range, what resolution will this be?
It's not a resolution, it's just a vote.
It's just a vote, okay. All right, so a motion, Mr.
I have a question.
He said that.
I, forward. I, I, I have a question. I thought that, uh, earlier when we were working on the budget. That we talked about forty-five for the deputy directors. When, when did we increase this amount?
It, it hasn't been increased. It is forty-five now. They, they wanted to increase from forty-five. It had been a request to increase forty-five to fifty. The.
I wasn't aware of that.
Yes, it been paid off quite a lot of time go forward.
Again, I'm gonna say I wasn't aware of that.
So you all, that they already had a ra- I'm sorry, that they already had a raise and then they're asking for another one?
The deputy directors, uh, got a raise, were put into, um, exempt status. Which meant they were no longer eligible for overtime. Uh, they wanted it to be the same, uh, in parity with, uh, the other deputy director of the landfill at the time. And that's where that's, that's how that started. And, Mr. Jones, if you wanna address that, feel free.
Wait, can I, can I, can I say something, please? I'm wasn't, I'm, I'm with Miss Ford. I thought that the discussion when we raised the other two deputy directors to forty-five. That the deputy director at the landfill was supposed to go to forty-five. I thought all three of them were supposed to make the same amount.
I second that because that was what we, we, we talked about.
I believe that is the case. And then, Mr. Turner.
I, I, I just can't.
But in the budget, I believe that's true.
Excuse me, I just came back on. I didn't hear what the question was.
Well, the question was, in the budget, now, the deputy directors for sanitation, street and landfill. Were all set at forty-five or the same in the budget, in the base pay? I don't know about the base pay, but it was in the budget. I think that's correct.
No, I don't think it was in the budget. I think everybody was trying to get the same amount. And it was suggested that we, uh, take the deputy director from the landfill back to forty-five.
Right, it's base pay, right.
I don't know about being a base pay, but I, I know it was supposed to go back to forty-five. And then the, uh, the land, meaning the street and the sanitation, the deputy director. Uh, would, all, all three of the salaries would be forty-five.
And that is what we propose.
I remember it the same way.
It was not changed in the budget. You increased the, those two positions when you gave. Like the other raises, when you gave the payroll clerk and a deputy. Again, when you gave all those other raises, that's when you increased the foreman to forty-five thousand. Budget increased in the budget. It was increased after that when you made the other, uh, change to, to salaries.
Mr. Turner, if I may, I remember.
I remember this time, why?
Well, I remember, I, I'm sorry, I remember this way. What happened was this, Miss Ford and Miss Crockett, you're absolutely correct. What happened is they didn't bring them, well, remember, we had this discussion about the landfill person. The landfill person came in at fifty. He had to have fifty. Remember, the body was discussing, Miss Ford. You, me, Miss Davis, Miss Decker was discussing, uh, and Miss Crockett, and Mr. St. Columbia was discussing how. They, they said the person they wanted would come in at fifty. And we thought then, that we said forty-five because, uh, I was told, you don't have to bargain with the salary, you make the salary. So that's how, but, but the mayor said fifty and they. So that's how, but, but the mayor said fifty, and they, that's what happened with the fifty. That's why these other two people are not at the fifty. We did bring them to forty-five, but this, the other, we had the landfill, if I'm right, Mr. Turner, and Miss Ramsey's correct, if I'm wrong. The, the landfill salary is fifty, am I correct? Uh, no. Um, city, Andre Val for record, what happened?
Field director was fifty thousand dollars for the base pay for the landfill director.
Right, so that's.
Let me interrupt you for a second, Mr. Franklin. At the time, before you merged the departments, you had fifty thousand dollars for the general manager. That was the base pay. That's how the mayor was able to hire the individual and they received that salary. All of y'all are correct that what you said, we would levelize, that we want base pay to be forty-five for all department. For all deputy directors going forward. So if there was a new person hired in that position, they would start at forty-five instead of fifty. And so that was the discussion that you all had, which you leveled out to them all at forty-five. But that person still had fifty, because the departments hadn't been merged yet, and they still had a general manager's position. Uh, at the time of, of the persons being employed, and the base pay for the general manager's position was fifty thousand dollars. You all discussed breaking the budget, leveling, leveling eyes, being forty-five across the board. And you wanted base pay to be forty-five across the board going forward for any future person who would be the deputy director for landfill. As well as street and sanitation, so all of them being forty-five, is what you all had discussed back then.
But.
So basically, but, but every, everybody's right. The, the fifty thousand was what was in there before. But they were all levelized, as, as Mr. Valley said, forty-five. So what this motion would do. Is elevate those two other positions, um, to fifty and, you know. As well as the treasurer's salary. Any other, there were, I think there were some other questions or comments, but are there still any other questions or comments about the motion? If, if not, Mr. Ramsey, call her on.
Davis. St. Columbia. Crockett. Franklin.
Yes.
Etherly.
Yes.
Forward. Have two yes, four absent.
No, I'm, I'm here, my phone was messing up, my vote is yes.
Yes, okay. Three yes, three absent or not online.
Any other, is there anybody else voting? Didn't get heard. If not, all but yes.
Before yes.
Does that get us there?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, um. All right, so.
Thank you guys, uh, you guys for the, for the increase.
Okay, so, um, if, we, we are gonna talk about some of these other issues on salaries here, if we get that far. Um, if we don't get that far, then we'll take, uh, all the questions and, and, uh, under advisement. For the next meeting, but the, we have some guests here in our height mic, and I don't know what their schedules are.
Mayor, I'm sorry, I had to include my vote.
Miss Davis, I'm sorry.
Yes.
You wanted about, yes, on that last one, is that what you're? You're kind of breaking up, honestly. Just, if you would, uh, message. Unless there's, I guess we can always object in the next meeting, but I think Miss Davis said she wanted about yes on the record for that.
I missed the, the thing, I'm sorry, I had to leave the room.
Do you want to be recorded on that vote?
Well, what was, what was the motion?
Motion was to raise Mr. Turner's salary and the two, uh, deputy directors of public works, sanitation and street.
Okay, that's fine. Oh, it's fifty thousand, is that?
Yes.
Okay, yeah.
So you, you wish to be recorded as a yes vote, if you change your mind, you can later, you know, um.
I, I vote yes.
Just.
I had to leave the room, um.
This technology makes, makes these things complicated. We still have to approve minutes next week, so. Um, but I think we have enough recorded votes to, uh, to make it official. If anybody wants to, uh, change that letter, go ahead. Uh, but, but the official vote stands, um, so we're gonna move on, and, um. Hold on a second, if, if it's, uh. I'm gonna go ahead and, um, Ms. Jones, hold on a second, we've got some guests. And, and, uh, we'll come back to the issue, uh, we can, we can actually discuss this issue while we're doing these other things, but I'm gonna. Go ahead and recognize Mr. Jack Daniels, are you still on here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, thank you for being patient, um, if you would, um, go ahead, uh. We're here, you're here again for the event permit for the King Biscuit Blues Festival. Uh, there should be information in your packet again. Um, I didn't, we spent a lot of time and we don't have, you know, I don't feel like you have to. You shouldn't feel like you have to do the briefing you did last time. So, if it's, it's okay with you, I'm just gonna open it up to questions from the council right away. And that might save all of us a little time. Is that okay, Mr. Daniels?
Uh, yes, sir, just, uh, two notes, Mr. Mayor, I've added two memos to the packet, uh, to highlight. Uh, very specifically and answer some of the questions that came up during discussion. One specific to, uh, our safety plan, and the other one specific to, uh, direct payments for twenty nineteen services to the city.
Okay, any questions of Mr. Franklin's or comments on the memos that were attached? I'll give everybody a chance to, to look it over. As well as myself, to be honest. I've looked at it, but I hadn't studied it. Any questions, uh, about the memos, or any questions you'd like to direct to Mr. Daniels?
I, I got a couple, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Daniels, how you doing this afternoon?
Good, how are you? Hello?
Was, I was, I was trying to see, did you, uh, speak to Mrs. Verner Boyd? I'm pretty sure she's on the call as well. Uh, did you, I have a chance to speak with her, and, uh, because this is, this is me. I'm, I, I would like to, for those streets that stay occupied not to be blocked. Because last year, the Brown's home for funeral, Walner, though, all those streets were blocked off, and this is like the third year. Now, this is what I want to say also, because it's rumored that I, I'm, that people are saying that I'm trying to stop the festival. Only thing I ask for, and correct me if I'm wrong, only thing I ask for is, is to make sure that, that the safety. Uh, with the Delta of Dance is out, and Mrs. Boyd, those are my concerns to you, right?
Yes, sir, those, those were the major ones, um, to answer your question directly. Um, safety from a standpoint, I'm, I'm gonna hit safety real quick, cause there's a whole memo, and I know there's a lot of language there, and you guys are very busy. Uh, the, as, as far as our protocol, we match what the C D C guidelines are. And then also the state of, uh, Arkansas's guidelines, um, at the minimum. And so that's, that's the basic, and I, I know I covered that at length in the last meeting, but to reiterate that point, um. We, we will go above and beyond, and some of those, some of those tick offs is having hand washing stations. Having, having social distance activities, and, and, and if there's more called for, that is more we'll do. And, and then in regards to this Boyd, um, we, we cannot contact her by phone. Um, the, the numbers were, that I, that I have are not reaching her. We did send a letter to her place of business. Um, describing, uh, the vehicle egress a, agreement that we, uh, that we work with most people who, uh, who. Have concerns about parking in egress downtown. Um, and, and in very brief, it states that if, if we block any of their egress, assuming she has signed, signs the agreement. Uh, any egress that we pay for the entirety of that day's rental of their spaces. So, we've got an hour or so to rectify anything if she makes that aware, but, um. If, if we block her space for any day, she would receive a payment of, uh, four hundred and fifty dollars in compensation. So, uh, we, we, we kind of offer that, I guess you could say, as an insurance policy and an opportunity for anyone downtown. Who, um, is, is, is worried about their egress, we, we will do our best, in, in reasonable safety measures to, to make their space. And their, their lot especially available, especially for Miss Boyd. Um, but, uh, we, we, we hang that as, as additional carrot to keep our operations team from doing anything unforeseen. And, uh, I feel like, uh, we, we marked it out as thirty spaces, that's thirty spaces at fifteen dollars a space. Uh, and it would be a direct payment to, uh, Miss Boyd if we block that on a, on a daily basis. We don't plan to. Uh, it is not in our, in our, in our plan, she is outside of our blocked area, but. If something gets moved, a vehicle blocks her way, we are on the hook for that, as long as she signs the agreement.
Uh, I think, I'm sorry, uh, Miss Boyd, if she's on the call, can she have a chance to respond?
No, 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 this boy's not.
This, this Miss Crockett.
You're always recognized.
Okay, I have the question, you're saying, if, that, I mean, if she signs the agreement. What happens if she does not assign an agreement?
Well, we will continue to honor our commitment to not blocking her space. Her, her, her egress is outside of our, of our blockaded areas. Um, but, uh, like I said, this is additional insurance. We worked this out, um, and this was brought up in the two thousand nineteen permit process. With the McNary family, we have an agreement with them and an ongoing, uh, a, a re-upped agreement for the twenty twenty-one event. So, if they, if we block their, 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 their egress, we're on the hook for that. Uh, we, we offer this agreement, again, as insurance and as the opportunity to be compensated if something happens. That, uh, is not, um, is not planned for.
So if it's not in the plans to do it, then why are we, I mean, I mean, why is this a part of the discussion? Other than we, you know, you all are going to assure us that it's not gonna be blocked. And it, and it has nothing to do, nothing personal, but I'm just trying to make sure that most people are taken care of. And this was an issue for her and her husband last year, so. If it's not, I mean, they had been blocked, they had been blocked many years prior to that, many, and that's the, uh, city did.
Who was, who was talking? Who's, who's talking? Who's talking?
Then of Helena West Helena, you blocked them for three years.
Ma'am, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Please be in her right now, please. All right, the, and now, the citizens have to ask to be on the agenda, there's a process for that. Once we make exceptions, it'll be very chaotic, uh, and it's already a little chaotic anyway, using this format. So my apologies, but you do have to be on the agenda, you have to be requested, it has to be approved and so forth. Um, and that started where I got, uh, I want to say this to Mr. Daniels, though, um. We missed last year, obviously, because of COVID, but we did have this con, this conversation already, and. Um, the main concern I had, which is similar to theirs, is that we did say we were gonna, well, the festival said. It was gonna do something it didn't do regarding those concrete barriers. And I made a commitment then, and I want to reiterate that commitment tonight, because we ended up not having it last year. So, nobody had to honor any commitments, but I will, uh, extend what I said for that one. I will personally show up, what do you, y'all get there about fourth, four in the morning or four thirty or something crazy? If I remember, uh. If you will promise to coordinate with me. And I think we helped you set it up even, um, but, uh, I will personally go down there and I'll personally commit. That those barricades are put where they're supposed to be put, so that the problem that we're having. When it comes to more egress and what we're talking about right now, will not happen. And that we, you know, we'll follow the plan, follow the agreement, I'll personally make that commitment. That's what I did last time to sort of break that impasse. And, and, but we just didn't have the festival, so I will offer to do that again. Uh, happily, we'll do that to try and avoid any miscommunication. So, it will be on me as well. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, yes, sir, you're recognized.
First of all, I'd like to thank Mr. Daniels, uh, for, uh, working so hard and putting this thing together. And I, I think that what we found, that, that K B B F is willing to do anything and everything possible. To work with the community in every way we possibly can, uh, and the city work with them. So we really have no problem, uh, and they're willing to sign off to the fact that they're willing to pay people. If there is a loss, it's kind of like a grant of insurance. And you personally, the mayor, said you'd go down there to make sure that the people are gonna be satisfied. I see we have no problem and no need of discussing this matter any further. I make a motion that we accept K B B F recommendations for the Blues Festival. I make a motion. Council members to give me a.
Okay, you made.
Mr. St. Columbia makes the motion that we approve the event permit for the Blues, King Biscuit Blues Festival. Is there a second? Is there, is there a second to approve the permit for the King Biscuit Blues Festival twenty twenty-one?
I'm going to second it, but I'm ready for discussion.
Miss Davis seconds the motion, motion maybe second it, okay, now we'll open it back up. Apologize for it, cut off, but I'll, uh, recognize here.
Well, I, I, if I can.
Can I say something?
I think actually, Miss, Miss, uh, Crockett was the one I cut off, if I'm not mistaken, and then, uh.
What I would like to say in response to what Mr. St. Columbia just said. The reason we're having this discussion now is because the fire years that they promised to do something, they did not do what they said they, that they were gonna do. They came to the meeting, they promised to do it, and then when the Blues Festival got here, they did not, uh, honor their commitment. They did exactly what they're, they do all the time, is to block the people's, uh. In grid, but, uh, and I think that's why we're having the, the conversation now, because they make the agreement, but they don't hold up to it. Because once they, they put it down there and they don't move it, then if, if Miss Boyd or whoever, and I'm just using her name. Moves the, moves the barricade from where it's not supposed to be, then the police are on the scene to arrest them, and that's not fair to them.
I think the mayor has, has said he would personally go down there and make sure it was done. So we've put the monkey on his back and let him handle that thing, so I, I, I think we've got the mayor's word, we'd have to hold his feet to the fire.
Yeah, I, I would say.
I was just responding to what you said, Mr. St. Columbia, when you said that they did what they, they were working with the people. No, it has been said that they were gonna do one thing and did it, uh, totally up.
I totally agree with what Miss, uh, Crockett is stating, and you said, uh, St. Columbia, you don't see what the problem is. But it is a problem for them, it's not a problem for you, but it is a problem for them. And you spoke of them being paid, that's not what they want. They don't want to be paid, they want to be able to use their lot. As other people down there using theirs for parking, or whatever they want to use it for. As well as other fest, festivals are great things, welcome as, as many things as we possibly can for this city. But it needs to be done right and in order, and there is a problem. And all we're trying to do is fix the problem and make sure that it's fair across the board.
Yeah, and, and, and this, I call me, I'll just say that, that they're, they're kind of, everybody's kind of right here. They're, it just, the barricades got put down in the wrong place the year before last, and it caused problems. And so I, when we met, if y'all remember, there was sort of a meeting after the council meeting of the agreed parties. And what I agreed to do was to show up myself, to make it, to put it on myself, not on somebody I would order or direct. To show up to make sure that those barriers are very difficult to move once they're pla, in place. So to make sure they're put in place correctly the first time, I will personally guarantee it, personally. Personally show up, so that that mistake does not happen again. The, so it's, again, it's kind of both, everybody's right here, we're just trying to fix this problem, I think. And are there any other questions or comments?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, I have one. Mr. Mayor, it shouldn't be on your back. What we, what should happen is this right here. Once, once, once you all pass this, there will be another motion for not to block those, those properties anyway. I'm gonna make a motion once we pass this, because you shouldn't have to go down there. You shouldn't have to hold somebody's tongue on fairness. Those people who have properties down there have a right to earn money. It's a festival, they pay property taxes, and they should, they have the right to use their places for parking or whatever. So once, what, once this passes, because it was, it was said that it wasn't gonna pass, once this passes, I'll come back with a motion. And I hope, and I, and I'm sure to get a second that we will not block those properties. So you don't have to waste your time going down there to make sure a barrier is put in place. I'll fix that tonight.
Well, we'll, we'll discuss that in a minute, but I will make that commitment anyway, because that was the plan initially, it just got put in the wrong place, and then it didn't get moved. And it should have been moved. If, if I'd have known about the moving issue, I would have taken care of that too, if that happened when I was there, I think it did. But I do just want to make sure, and so I'll still commit to doing that. But, but anyway, any other questions or comments?
Yeah, just, just one. Um, yes, sir, and, and thank you. The history, I think, is more troubling than, than described about the five-year period. Two years ago, which was the last festival, we did have that meeting after the meeting concluded. And there was supposed to be a meeting, I want to say it was between the festival and some of the people who had concerns. The festival had a meeting coming up in a day or so, and then it was supposed to report back to us at our, our next regular council meeting. And they actually canceled their meeting, didn't meet with the citizens, and didn't come to our meeting. And we had already approved the permit. So I hear what Mr. Franklin is saying, and I, I, I've had people calling me all week long in the last, you know, couple of weeks, because they believe in the propaganda that the council is trying to stop the festival. But what's actually happening is council is trying to protect those citizens who have an interest in property downtown. And the only way to do it is to do it before you grant the permit. Now, I hear what Mr. Franklin is saying, but once you grant the permit, the permit is granted, and you start talking about separate actions, separate motions. Any stipulation should be placed into the permit, so that it is a part of the actual permit that's granted to the festival. So I think if there's any changes that need to be made, any concerns, they need to be integrated into the permit, so that we don't have separate actions taken by the body. So you got one document that says you can do this, and you have another motion that's in the minute somewhere that says you can do that. And Mr. Franklin, I understand what you, what you, what you're saying, but I just think it should all be integrated into the document that authorizes them to conduct business. In that way, there's no question about what everybody's referring to, what they're relying on, and how everybody's moving forward. And so to that end, I think that there needs to be some coming together between the parties, and that's all everybody wants. People want, the, the, the people who have businesses down there, property, want to have an opportunity. If this festival is so great for the citizens of Helena West Helena and Phillips County, everybody ought to be able to participate in it and make money off of it. Mr. Daniel said something a couple of weeks ago that kind of struck me, and that is, and Mr. Daniels, I don't want you to take this as, as a side swipe, but it's just accurate. I have a law offices down in the festival zone, and has been for a number of years, as long as I've been here. And by Thursday, we can't conduct business because there's so many people down there, so nobody comes to the office because they can't get in. And you made comments about, well, if they, if they have a business, they shouldn't be able to, to do something maybe that a vendor might be doing on the downtown area. Now, obviously, I won't be trying to sell hot dogs and hamburgers outside of my law office, I'll just go home and work from, and work from home. However, some people have small businesses down there, and if they can't do the thing that they primarily do during the festival, they should be able to make money in any way that is legal and safe and good for them to do it. And we shouldn't be placing restrictions on them, because long after the festival is gone, those are going to be property owners right here in the city of Helena West Helena. And if people are allowed, I see it in so many different kinds of ways. Down, the downtown area is basically a dead area in downtown. And so if we want to encourage people to invest in property, maybe they do it for one day, one weekend out of the year. And if they do it for one weekend out of the year, but they want to invest money in the downtown area, whether it be Cherry, Walnut, or any of the, the other streets that are in the festival zone, let's encourage them to do it. They can come down and take an empty lot and sell some hot dogs and park some people and make some money. We should encourage people to do that, because it is long-term good for all of us. And so I think all these issues need to be taken up in the permit process, so that we don't go over every year again and again and again and again. We improve the permit, because they submit the same thing every year. If we improve it as we go, we don't have to talk about it next year, year after that, year after that. We fix it now, and if there's something else that needs to be fixed next year, we fix it again, and we do it again and again. But we don't leave those, those repairs behind, we put it in the document and move forward. And that's all I gotta say, and I will stand, stand down and be done.
Okay, Mr. There, any other comments or questions on the motion?
Yes, ma'am, Mr. Mayor, will Mr. Saint Columbia or Mrs. Davis change the motion to honor, miss, the people, the people that have the complaint with blocking their property? Can they change the motion to not block off those properties? As Mr. Ethel and I stated.
Let, let me ask a quick question, Mr. Daniels. The agreement about, the only thing that, that I guess I'm, I'm losing, missing something maybe. I thought there was something in writing, a security plan agreed to, it's just that it wasn't followed. So no matter what we put in writing, if it doesn't get implemented, it doesn't matter anyway.
Yes, sir.
I mean, you put money attached, Mr. Ethel, explain to me how we haven't already done that? Because it seems to me we have, it's more a question of implementation and enforcement than it is of what we put in the permit and what we put in the motion. And the only thing you can do about that is to, is to create a monetary damage situation for anybody if it happens again, and to make sure that your mayor, you know, enforces what the permit and what the security plan agreed to says. It was already agreed to, it's just it wasn't implemented. I mean, so that's where I'm, that's where I'm lost here before we take it forward.
Well, if, if you're asking me directly, I'm not addressing any specific item that did get implemented, or maybe was in the permit and didn't get enforced. I'm just making a, I was making a general response, because Mr. Franklin said he wanted to make a motion after the fact. I don't know what his motion is gonna be, but if it's not in the permit, I would suggest you get it in the permit. And so that's just a general statement. I didn't know about the barricades being placed in improper, because some of the stuff you kind of get on the fly. So I'm not addressing any particular issue, just a general statement. Let's not piecemeal it. If there's something that's a concern and needs to go into the permit, let's, let's do it all in one, in one rep.
Well, how exactly would you put it in the motion? I'm just curious how you, how do you word that?
In the motion?
Yeah, how would that be? From Mr. Valley, you can answer that too, I guess, if you, if you can, if you're connected.
Our granting, our granting of the festival permit is to, we approve something, a document that they've submitted to us. And we say, yes, you have approval to host this event within the parameters that are outlined in your request or your application. And so it's not in the motion, the motion is just to approve it or not approve. The details have to go into the, the application of the permit that we're granting. I think that's what you're asking. I don't think his motion can, and that's the whole point. I don't think a motion, an oral motion, can cover everything, it needs to be in right.
Oh, may I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm in total agreement, we should never, never block, without giving them some type of compensation. Of course, that is what KBBF is willing to do, they're willing to work with the people. Of course, I, I agree with Mr. Ethel on the fact that anyone that owns property down there should have the right to, they sell things and do business with the public. And of course, if they're selling food, they naturally would have to be in, pay sales tax on that food and report that, and so the city can receive revenues. And also, they would have to be inspected by the health department. So, I mean, we're covered there financially, they, they own it, and if they did those things out of their own business, of course, they, they do have a license to operate their business, they could sell most anything they want to if they have a city permit to operate their business. So, but if they don't have a business and want to open one up, I think there's something in our, in ordinance that they have to have, have to be there at least two or three months before I think they can start up a business down there to, to gainfully participate in the festival. I, I don't know what that regulation is, but if we need to have ordinances or resolutions to govern other things, all festivals and any, any property owner's rights, I think that would be, like Mr. Franklin said, under another ordinance or resolution on it. But the main issue right now, we need to go ahead and, and approve the KBBF permit, because we have other people that want to have. And of course, if we do, they will have to comply the same as any, any organization has. So I stand on my motion that we should go ahead and move forward with this festival permit. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments this time? We do need to kind of move forward, we've got other guests and things to talk about. Okay, the motion's been made, second discussion has been held, Ms. Ramsey Colorado.
Mayor. I'm sorry. Until the wording is done in the correct format.
I'm Mr. Davis. You said, did you withdraw your second, is that what you said?
Yes, until the contract is worded correctly.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask Ms. Davis what proper line? Man, for her second.
Sorry. Say that again.
He was, wants, wants to know how you would change the motion to incorporate the concerns, I think is what he said.
Mr. Ethel, just explain.
I don't think it's the motion that she wants to be reworded, I think it's the contract between the city and KBBF.
Yes, that's what I was saying, the contract, the actual contract, the wording in the contract, not your motion, Mr. Saint Columbia.
Okay, Ms. Davis withdraws her second from the motion. Is there another second to the motion still on the floor?
So Mayor, is it, is it possible for?
How long will it take Mr. Daniels to draw up?
Redo it, I'm sorry, to incorporate that into the contract, the wording.
Honestly, I'm not sure, because it's, it's already alluded to in the security agreement. The problem is, it just wasn't enforced or implemented. So, but I'm open to suggestions, I mean.
Okay, well, let me.
I think, I think the thing is that is being asked is to put in the agreement that they will not block, not block these people's properties in any short, shape, form, or fashion, and not to say that if they block it, that they're gonna compensate them. I think the thing is that it's to be said that those, that area is off limits to the Blues Festival.
That's all, thank you. Which he said it wasn't included anyway. So Mr. Daniels, would that be an issue for you and your committee, just to reword that?
Well, I, respectfully, I have to be very careful on what we're blocking and not blocking. Inevitably, this festival does occupy many blocks in the downtown area. And it says very specifically, the 100 to 600 blocks of Cherry Street and the 100 to 400 blocks of Walnut Street, including the connecting streets between. For me to say that I'm not gonna block any business would mean that that would void all of that egress. I certainly am, am more than happy to say that I won't block specific properties and put that in a specific memo as an addendum to this permit, but I cannot just broadly say, for the interest of the, the, that would open us up to all, basically, not being able to have the festival, because we wouldn't be able to occupy those spaces, essentially blocking everything. It is not our intention to, to, to stop any egress. And, but there is a level of security and a level of patron activity that goes on, on these streets, the, the ones I mentioned on Cherry and on Walnut, that there is foot traffic. We, we just simply can't have vehicles driving through there. That doesn't mean that we can't work with people, that doesn't mean we can't make things happen for people. But my, 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 my bottom line is I, I can't just open language up in the permit to say we can't block any business, because that's gonna put us in a position where we're providing vehicular access through a crowded area for a, a business on Cherry Street. And I, 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 KBBF, I, I, maybe in the past has had some challenges, is the, one of the reasons why I'm with the organization now, is to directly address those and to write a, a, a far more direct permit, and it even includes in the permit specifics what days we'll actually be occupying. But it is never our intention to, to stop commerce. But we also have to make sure that we structure an environment that, that, that allows the folks coming from in town, out of town, to have a good time, a safe time, and for commerce to happen legally under what, what is the permit process.
Uh, no, Mr. Daniels, that's not what I was saying. I know you can't block everybody's business, some people don't even care, but I, I, I was concerned about the property that was at hand, and that was Ms. Boyd's, because we've had an issue with that in the past. And you said that the way you had it, you all had it planned, that it was not blocked anyway, so is it possible to include that in any type of language?
I think that's certainly possible for that specific property, in the interest of time and not taking up the, the, the council's time at the next meeting. I, i, if you would motion for that to be included just in the language right now, we could handle that all in one spot. I'm, I'm more than willing to, to not block her specific process, excuse me, her specific property, along with the properties that we've already have agreements standing with. But, but I think we've, we've all now arrived on agreement, I think absolutely, there's no reason for us to block her property. And I think us blocking her property puts our permit in jeopardy, and that is not something we have any interest in doing. And with the mayor being on the ground, watching it, can, can, can provide necessary enforcement if that does happen.
Okay, well, I want to say you're not, you know, it's not a problem for me, you're not taking up my time, I can wait.
You know, I'm wondering that if this can be modified, can we not have a special call for just that one item tomorrow?
Sure, I don't have a problem with it.
I'm agreeing with that before, I'm ready.
I'm in. And it'll take just a few minutes, I'm sure. Mr. Daniels, is it okay with you?
That's certainly okay, yes.
Thank you. Mayor.
Well, I won't be able to attend it, but I might be able to, I'm not really sure what the answer to that question is. So, but any other, any other, any other comments, or it sounds like, so there, I'm pregnant there's not a second to the motion. So that, if that is correct, then the motion does for lack of a second.
Listen to Dan. When can you get that to the mayor or somebody so that they can get us? Because I need to see it written before I vote on it.
Yes, ma'am, we, we'll work on it right away, so you should have that language to be honest with you shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Whether it be, I think, aren't we meeting next Tuesday? Whether be it, I think, aren't we meeting next Tuesday? This Ramsey.
Yes, sir, we are.
We can get this done tomorrow.
Well, only if you can all get together and get a quorum. So let's just say this. Let's just say this. If y'all can get yourselves together, get a quorum and do it and get that done by tomorrow, that's fine by me. Otherwise, we'll put it on the top of the agenda before we do anything after the roll call uh next Tuesday so we can at least dispense with it quickly.
I I think four people agreed, and uh you know, we always have the mayor approach him.
Uh, yes, ma'am, that's true. But you also have to get together on technology and or meet in person, or you got to figure out the logistics of that. If you can figure out the logistics of that, then it is okay by me is what I'm trying to say. If you can't, then then we can also do it Tuesday, which is not too far away this week. So.
Boy is saying is that we are agreeing now to ask that a special call meeting be called for tomorrow. I think we just need a time. This is going to be the only thing on the agenda, and we'll do it just like we're doing this by Zoom.
Can we not have it at noon? He'll have the thing to us uh the changes, the addendum to us before noon. Uh, Helen, if you would be so kind, really, you'd be appreciated uh if you can uh do a Zoom tomorrow. Can we not do this around noon tomorrow?
It's gonna have to be twenty-four hours.
You gotta, you have to give the media a three hour notice.
I guess I can say it's only two or three hours.
But you have to give them notice and you have to give them a copy of what is what the agenda is or something like that.
Jack, can you not send it to the media also?
This for this for, we will try to do that, and I'll leave it up to the staff to figure that out if it's possible. It is. If it's not, then we'll do plan B. But.
Mayor, I I would like I would like to do everything that I can, and I'm sure the council, to get uh Mr. Jack his permit by tomorrow.
Okay, thank thank you for that. Um, and I think everybody heard that. So they will do the best they can. It's all I can do um to try and make that happen. In the meantime, uh, it sounds like we need to move on. There's no uh consensus to approve it tonight. So I'll trust y'all to get together um and figure that out to the sufficient um to to make Ms. Boyd happy and the rest of the members of the council uh when it comes to the egress. Any other questions about that? And I'll just say this, I will say this because I won't be involved in it tomorrow. I've also got a business downtown that has also been inconvenienced for years by the Blues Festival, including when we try to make deposits on Cherry Street, not to mention our parking lot, which is full of people instead of customers who don't can't find parking. It's extremely inconvenient, but our business is more than happy to be inconvenienced for a few days in in order to make room for such a prestigious event in our city that we're proud of. And it's not, it's not, you know, it's not a fun few days and sometimes we'll shut our business down because it's almost impossible to run a business. I certainly understand the inconvenience. Um, but there's going to be an inconvenience when you have that popular festival, and I welcome that inconvenience because of what it means for our town. And I hope the spirit of that, which I do believe is the spirit most of our town feels about the festival, should not be sacrificed just for one individual. Because the other individuals in this discussion have already been uh are already happy and live, you know, they're they're good with the agreement. We have. There's only one individual that I'm aware of who's still opposed to it. I don't know how you make that individual happy, but good luck doing that, and we'll move on. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your patience.
Well, I would like to respond to you, Mayor, about your business. Uh, I understand, but your your business is something that people can mail in or do. These people are trying to make money. You're not trying to make any money from the Blues Fest. These people are trying to make money on the property that they pay property tax on every year. That's the difference.
Right. Okay, thank you, Ms. Crockett.
And if I also, I just got this to say, I, Mr. Mayor, with with those people, Ms. Boyd is not the only person. There were a group of people came about their property.
Yeah, they were all happy. They were all happy.
Ho- ho- hold on, Mr. Mayor. My thing is this, the fest was here and and anybody wants to make a dollar, let them. They they pay property taxes. I'm I no one is against the Blues Festival. When you got a festival, even with the Gospel Festival, even with the the uh legendary festival, those people property are not blocked. They're open so they can make some money too. It's nobody don't want to, nobody does not want to see the festival come here. It's just people want 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 to get ahead. That that that's what make America America a good place to live. When you got small businesses to come make a little change, Ms. Boyd is going to be here. Those Brown Spinnerhole gonna be here. Brown Spinnerhole was blocked off the last time. I was out there walking to make sure they didn't block these properties off. So it it's not that we don't want it. With those people deserve some fairness too. Those are our people. Those are our citizens. Those are our taxpayers. And and people coming in for a couple of days, I'm I'm grateful that they're coming. But the people who sacrifice cutting their grass, making downtown look, making their property look good. Kim Kim Delta's down there, the Delta Culture, and all those people are down there. Everybody is is trying to work to make this festival work, but I don't think that you should be like be like this. We're all trying to be be the solution to the problem. And that's and that's what it is.
Thank you, Mr. Daniels, and we'll I'll leave it up to you to get back with uh the parties involved to get a resolution uh by the deadline suggested. Thank you for your time of mine. Okay, we also have another gentleman that's been waiting patiently, Mr. Amos King uh regarding, I'm sorry, I'm I just skipped over Mr. Sims. Is Mr. Sims available? Ryan and Sims. Ryan and Sims, I'm giving uh didn't make the skip there, um. Um, okay, well, maybe Mr. Somebody can get Mr. Sims back on. I know it's been a long meeting and we've spent spent an awful lot of time on on this uh on the Blues Festival again. So again, I'm going to recognize you, Mr. Amos King, uh fellow classified football uh and track and about everything else uh player of mine, and we want to welcome you uh to talk about the event permit for Voices Across the River Gospel Fest on August seventh. Mr. King, you're recognized again. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you very much this evening, Mr. Mayor. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everyone from Helena. Just for the people that don't know me, uh, uh, my name is Amos King. I'm a nineteen seventy-nine graduate of Central High School. Nineteen eighty-three graduate of University of Arkansas at Pine Bluff. I'm from Helena, born right there on five fourteen and a half Ellam Street, just moving around the world. I uh twenty-eight year uh retired disabled veteran. I retired and crawled in the army after twenty-eight years. I live down here in Atlanta, and I'm in the communication, radio, TV business. And I I'm in the promotion business, and I wanted to come home and do a concert, a gospel concert in Helena. This is not my first concert. It's the first one outside. But it's not the first one I've done in Helena, and I'm very excited about even getting into consideration. So uh when I came here, I decided I was trying to partner with the KFFA. They agreed to partner with us for this concert, and I'm very excited about it. I'll be doing it out of your way in five minutes. It's not going to take me long. Uh, all we're trying to do is bring our family and friends out that day to see each other again, relax and have a good time. No money is going to be made. So there's a lot of problems there you don't even have to deal with. I'm going to sponsor the concert. I've already contacted the groups and made sure everything is on board with the stage is already set. But I understand I have to go through this process right here. I'm very much looking forward to coming home to put on this concert and concert is uh start at one o'clock with our children, be on the stage from one to three. If they got the talents of singing or whatever they want to do for two hours, then at three, we'll have a a sound check and the concert will start at five o'clock. It'll go from five to nine. Nine o'clock, we out of there. I've already talked to Mr. Jones about the cleanup. I've ensured him that when we leave there, it'll be just like we found. So you don't have to worry about that at all. But uh we're just very excited to be coming to Helena to put this on uh at this time, and hopefully, just like I said, it's a family friend day. Uh, we're going to give away backpack to the kids because school is nearing and uh that's pretty much it in a nutshell. If you have some questions for me, I'd be glad to entertain them.
Got a question for you, Mr. King?
Yes.
I'm glad that you uh initially come into our town. Uh, I move to the body to be accept Mr. King's permit.
Mr. Franklin moves.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Franklin.
I'll second the motion.
Got you. Mr. Mr. Franklin moves that we adopt the event permit for the Voices Across the River Gospel Festival August seventh, twenty twenty-one. Mr. Cyclone, your second's the motion to approve the co- the permit.
I'm glad to see it. See it happen. That's wonderful. And we need more gospel singing up there.
Any questions or comments from members of council? Um, my only comment would be just like sure that on the cleanup, we didn't, we didn't do the that. I'm not sure we're going to get to it, but uh that's that has been an issue um in the past. The King Biscuit pays, if you saw the memo, pays the city pretty substantial sum for the cleanup and also cleans up a lot of their own stuff. So that's always been an issue uh for years. So just please uh honor what you agreed to do with.
I I will, I will assure you that uh, you know, I don't, I don't anticipate no more, maybe two, three hundred people coming out. I don't know how many are going to come out, but the places don't look like we found when we leave.
Right. Thanks, Mr.
I think what the mayor is saying that it is customary that we have the all of the department heads to sign off on it, and then it has to be signed saying that, you know, about the cleanup. I don't think it's uh anybody, well, I know I'm not uh trying to go against it, but one rule should apply for all. I think that's what's being said.
Well, I I let me get an understanding. Are you saying is there a fee I need to pay?
Well, we actually, what what's been on discussion is going to deposit that you would lose if you don't clean it up yourself.
Is what what is the?
But we haven't.
We haven't passed anything about a deposit, Mr. King. I think that you just have to have your name on the dotted line to say that the fire department, the police department, the street sanitation, all of these people have signed out. We have a standard form.
And I've got it signed by everybody.
Okay, then have you turned that in to Ms. Rams?
I've got a copy of it on my desk right now.
Oh, okay, then. So I don't see a problem with, okay.
Uh, I'd like to ask Mr. King one question. Uh, if in the event uh you do not clean it uh like it should be or uh is is agreed by Mr. Jones, who's head of the city sanitation, uh, and he sends you a bill that he had to go back and clean it up, would you pay that bill?
Well, you want me to leave a five hundred dollar deposit just to make sure?
That's up to you and the mayor.
I mean, whatever.
Again.
I'm willing to do whatever. It's 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 not the money. It's not the problem. If you just tell me what I need to do.
I I'm just asking you to to honor your commitment to Mr. Jones. If we if we ask you to do that, we'd have to ask everybody, and I'd rather the council approves.
I'm giving you my word. I'm giving you my word.
And I I've known you for many years, and it's good enough for me. I just want to reiterate that because that's usually the problem is the cleanup the next day, and I know you've discussed that with Mr. Jones. So I'm my only point was to to ask you to uh, you know, keep that in mind. So any other questions or comments? If not, Colorado.
Davis. Like Columbia?
Yes.
Crockett?
Yes.
Franklin?
Yes.
Ethel Lake?
Yes.
Forward?
Yes.
Five yes, one offline.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. King. Congratulations. We look forward to your festival.
Thank you much, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks again for being patient with us.
All right.
Good to see you. Um, so have have we had a chance for Mr. Sims to get on yet?
I don't have any paperwork on Mr. Sims with some included in our package. I don't see any.
I'm looking now. I'm gonna say, I see the one we just did. I don't see it. Ms. Ramsey, did we ever get the permit?
Mr. Mayor, the only thing that I received today was the third sheet, which is the signature sheet that only had the fire chief and police chief on it. Mr. Jones hasn't signed off on it yet. I did notify Mr. Sims that the first two pages did not come through, and when I left the office at four thirty-five, it hadn't been resent yet.
Okay, well, okay, Mr. Sims, I take it is not here.
We can't take that matter up until the form's completed.
Right.
Can we just place them on the agenda for the twentieth?
Right, that'd be good.
Uh, or you could do it at the same time as his other, and it go so choose as long as he gets his paperwork and it shows up. So uh, so we'll pass over that.
Can we place them on the agenda for the twentieth?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, as long as he's got his paperwork and he can show up, then I won't see. Okay, um, do we want to go back and discuss the the cleanup since we we started discussing that? Mr. Jones actually was think he was on, was trying to use till on. Mr. Jones. Well, and I don't believe I don't believe we have anything in the packet anyway, but I mean, this is something y'all have been discussing longer than I've been here, but um, if I always put it this way, and then so we can move forward. If y'all have any input comments about the discussion about putting, it is a problem. It's still a problem. Uh, we had a problem with the recent event down there uh not clean it up and didn't have to pay, and and Mr. Jones can talk about that for a long time. But uh, so the idea of a deposit um for cleanup, which y'all have been discussing for a long time. Um, the do y'all have any consensus on that? Uh, do y'all want to bring come uh come back with it later?
It might be something, Mr. Mayor, that uh you and the city attorney and uh your uh department head might want to get together and maybe propose a resolution or an ordinance concerning cleanup after an event of any event the city might have, a public event. Uh, you know, to put up a deposit or something. That'd be something that y'all might want to put in the form of an ordinance for future use for all any event held downtown or in any of the areas, parks or whatever, by any organization. We certainly want to keep our city clean, and the people putting those things on should uh be willing to clean it up or, you know, after they use it or pay the city to do. It's something you might want to work out with your city attorney and your department heads for cleaning up, cost of cleaning it up.
Thank you for second. Other questions or comments or input? Well, I would think the bigger biggest question there is the amount of deposit that would be required and the conditions of losing that deposit. If we have some kind of consensus on that, fairly simple to write it up. Mr. Valley's had some connectivity issues tonight, so I can't tell if he's on or off or or what, but uh.
I'm currently able to hear you.
Okay. So anyway, so if you want to get, uh, if y'all have any suggestions on that, get that to us. We'll try to put that on. I guess we're going to add that to the agenda for next Tuesday as well. Ms. Ramsey, and if we could all get, if you could at least get to us your ideas about about that amount and on the terms of losing the deposit. Okay, thank y'all. All right, so that deals with most of the event permit issues. All right, so the All right. So that deals with most of the event permit issues. All right. So the first issue after that is a resolution that should be in your packet. Uh, to appropriate funds for parks department, uh, for a parks coordinator is actually what the resolution says, uh, thirty-six thousand dollars salary. Oh, that's in there. Okay, sorry. For parks coordinator position. There's a resolution in the packet. So I want you to look over that resolution. The, uh, parks were closed during most of the pandemic, uh, pretty much all the worst part of it. In addition, there hasn't been a, I mean, this does not create a parks recreation department. Uh, I think that's a worthy discussion that we should have. And again, we, we've got some info, we've done some work on it. What this does do is create a position for a coordinator that would help us um, coordinate the parts, the, the parts we do have now to help us work on and uh, different, uh, programs. The North Helen Community Center would be the first one that comes to mind. It needs to be opened um, every day and be accessible, but we have to have somebody from the city there. We're not leasing the building out to anybody. Um, we might have agreements with different programs to run projects, but again, uh, it really needs a, a person the way we have had in the past. Who is there all day, every day, making sure that, um, you know, that it's, it's open, accessible to, to, uh, to people that want to, who want to use it. Um, there's no plan to charge any kind of fees. Uh, it'd be much like it was years ago where, I mean, also there is a bike, bicycle park behind that that was opened up right before I became mayor under Mayor Hallwell with a grant, I think, with a grant. Um, that hasn't seen much use either because there hasn't been anybody on site to monitor or be over that. So what this would do is it would, it doesn't, it's not incredibly ambitious. It doesn't line out whole parks or a great apartment. Uh, I think we do, should have one. I think we should have that discussion. I think we should do that. We've already started in that direction, but it's summertime already and it takes about a month to hire somebody, if not more than a month from the day you advertise it. Um, but I can't do that unless y'all give me the appropriation for it. Uh, thirty-six thousand dollars comes from the coordinator position, I believe it was, Mr. Ramsey, that uh, we were looking back to see what those positions used to pay. And that was the position that I felt like was probably the most reasonable. To that, we can adjust that if you want, but as Mr. Turner pointed out earlier, um, we do have, we are blessed right now financially to be able to do it. We have our swimming pool did not reopen this year because the foundation that operates it uh, was not, was not willing to come because they're still worried about COVID when it comes to swimming pools, but they did obligate to come back next year. Um, we think the swimming pool program will be right, you know, back where it was again, we hope next year. But it's been closed for two years because of COVID. Um, there are a lot of things, grants and a lot of, a lot of things that need to be done in that arena. We're already stressed as a city, or our city employees, including this one, are already stressed as far as trying to do as much as possible, uh, with the people we have. So um, we really need a person who's dedicated to keep that building open, to supervise it, to make good use of it, and to help us go the next few steps. Um, it'll be advertised, it'll be, and you can send me candidates if you want to, or anybody could for that matter. Everything that we have to do normally will be done with this one. It just hasn't been appropriated. And I believe Mr. Valley would have to, uh, I don't know if we ever got to do the base pay amendment, but right now it's a resolution. So as I've said enough, it's getting late. Any questions about that?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Davis.
Hey, Mayor, have we heard anything about the grants that were written for the parks, parks and recreation?
No, we haven't. As far as being awarded or approved or, or denied even, we haven't heard.
I know. Ms. Ramsey says she was going to check with, um, the sharing to see. With Sam. Yes, ma'am.
As of last, as of last week, we had not been approved for any, but go ahead, Mr. Franklin.
Yeah, uh, Mr. I think that's a good idea, but I got this one for you all. It's, it's not, it's nice that you want a program coordinator to, to, to run the par- parks. But what we should do is there's a, the city has multiple parks. There is a park over, uh, close, right, uh, three blocks over from Ms. Davis's house and over beside, kind of like where Mrs. Betty Fay Brimley lives. Uh, coming around the curve from Washington, not Washington Street, from Russell. Now, the city has all these parks, but they're not being, I, I what the thirty-six thousand dollars could be, be, be put for right for this year, this is me saying, put that thirty-six thousand dollars on getting these parks up to code to look better. Use that thirty-six thousand dollars this year to get those, those parks where they are usable. You just say it like now, I know it's on Washington Street Park, there is a bike trail, but the bike trail been there for years because I'm from over on that side of town. There's always been a park, a, a, a bike trail through there. Now, the grass has not, the grass needs to be cut on the backside of it. It used to be a baseball field back there. We used to play baseball back there. Uh, the, the park on Washington's called the Waddell Sims Memorial Park. I would like to see, we use that thirty-six thousand dollars to get all of our parks up to code, get the grass sprayed, get, get, get it up and ready. So then we could see what we can do about, uh, appropriating money for a parks director. Right now, we get our parks up to code where people want to come. If you can even get them, uh, up to code before the Labor Day weekend, I, I'll be in, in favor of it. But right now, I can't be in favor of something that our parks look so bad. Uh, so bad. And if you would, if you want to do something, I think, uh, in each ward, there's a park. There's a Tenth Street Park over where I live now. I, Mr. Ethel has one, Ms. Davis and, Ms. Davis has one, uh, Ms. Ford and Ms. Crockett has one. Me and Mr. St. Columbia have, I think we have one. Tenth Street, Washington belongs to Mr. Ethel and Ms. Davis. Uh, the Cleo Dunnis Park belongs to Mrs. Ford and Mrs. Crockett. So those parks, and then you got the, uh, no, actually, Ms. uh, Mr. uh, Ms. Davis and Mr. Ethel have two. Uh, they have the Washington Street's park and the park over, uh, that has not been developed, but it's, it's a park over there. Uh, when, when you going around from, uh, Russell, from, around Russell, it's, it's, you know, it's a park there. So there's two parks in Mrs. Mrs. Davis and Mrs. Ethel's ward. There's one in me and Mrs. St. Columbia. And then there's two parks over, was our one park, the Cleo Dunnis Park and the little baseball park over there. Uh, and, and, and North Helen. So I would like to see that we take the initiative, getting those parks up and ready and cleaned up before we get a director. Because a director will have to come in and get it all together themselves, but if we got thirty-six thousand dollars to put for those parks up and running.
Mr. Franklin, where is the park that's close to me?
Ms. Davis. If, if, you don't know, I'm, I'm not saying it like them, is it, there is a park, um, do you, you know, what, right behind LTCM's hat? When you go down, what LTCM's in there, you go around, there is a park there, uh, right there is, is right, it's in, Ms. Betty Fay Brimley knows where it is. I've been to their park several, several times. It's off from, uh.
Who are you talking about? It's no longer a park, but I know what you're talking about. I know.
Mr. Christopher Franklin, we have Solomon Park and we also have the Eliza Miller Park.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Ford. I'm sorry about that as well. I, 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 I'm sorry, but those, um, and include Ms. Ford, they have more parks than anybody in their ward. I'm sorry, Ms. Ford. But, uh, like I said, uh, those parks are, if you go hide directed, thirty-six thousand dollars could get our parks together. But that kind of money you want to put in, 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 it was just at the peak of summer. I think that we can get those parks sprayed and together. And that's in this board, said the Solomon Park and, um, the Miller Park. We can get all those together and make them look like parks again. And then over here, where I was telling Ms. Davis, the park in her ward, when, and, and over in our city, not, or over in our city, we can get that together to make it look like there are several parks in the city. Even the Tenth Street, Street Park needs a little attention. You know, so I think if we can appropriate thirty-six thousand dollars for a salary, we can take thirty-six thousand dollars this year and get the parks up and running it together, replace some of those bleachers, get some wood and, and replace that. And it would give the person to come in some kind of a vision because we need to give them a start. Right now they don't have a start. So we need to see, well, can you get thirty-six thousand dollars? And I'd be happy to help appropriate that money into getting our parks together. So when we, when we can find somebody who's qualified for that position, I'll be happy to fund that position next year. But this year I would like to see the parks taken care and I yield back.
Okay. Well, and just, there's also tennis courts over by Woodruff. There are a few others. We, we have enough. We, we're blessed that we have a lot of parks. Uh, we have a lot of neighborhoods, but we also have a lot of parks. Um, they haven't been adequately maintained, in my opinion, for many, many years. Um, we've had a lot of, um, volunteers. I wanted to mention Quaid de Ball and Hope Turks brought a lot of people out to the ball fields in North Helena and helped a lot. Um, we have a lot of people who do try. We are spraying them already. I don't know if Mr. Jones is still on there, he can tell you that, but and trying our best to keep up with, with the mowing. But I do think we have to have, we have, and we have the money to afford to, uh, all of that stuff is great, but you've got to have somebody do it. You have to have somebody do it. And that's what the thirty-six thousand dollars is for. Um, is somebody to coordinate it, to, to get it to where, to, to get all of our vision, uh, visions for parks recreation put together. And at the same time, provide something now for our kids to go into these places and use them, especially the buildings and, and when in North Helena, but they'd be responsible for all of them. Uh, and trying to help us get to that place and whether it's, um, actually cash for getting out of our budget, which, which will be some of it, volunteers, uh, or grants. We need a coordinator. Uh, we have to, the most valuable component of that vision is to have people doing it. And the city has to at least commit to a full-time individual to be responsible for that. It doesn't have to be a department head or even a department. But we do need, not at this point, I, I, I hope we all, I hope we all want that again eventually. But we need to at least have a coordinator. And that's what this is. Other questions and comments?
I, I've, I've been looking at the old base pay ordinance. This is not in the base pay ordinance where we require an amendment to the base pay ordinance to add this position and create it and to fund it. Also, I would like you all to consider, uh, I've heard the mayor's request for thirty-six thousand. Uh, when we consolidate it, when we had a parks department and for the years that we had, we had consolidation. You consider all the parks y'all named as well as the responsibility for the golf course. You had the golf course, uh, the Anas and God Amory in, in Helena. Uh, you also had all the parks that Mr. Franklin has named and, and those that, that uh, also have been named by Ms. Ford. Uh, so it is quite an undertaking. It's not something that's small. Uh, I don't know the current status of, of, of the, what we have with the, with the golf course because we hadn't had a a, uh, parks department in a while, but when you're considering that, also, may I suggest you take consideration that, that responsibility as well. The city owns the golf course out of the airport and the park director used to, used to deal with that as well. Uh, but we need a base pay and they need to consider the salary that, that's comm- commiserate with all that. I think both you and with Franklin raised great points. Uh, it's more of a chicken or egg conversation. You think you need personality, person there, but also there needs to be appropriation to, to deal with, uh, so that they can use it. Uh, I would ask that, that I'll draft the base pay to, to put this on the agenda for next Tuesday. I think that, uh, both Mr. Franklin and, uh, the mayor have great points in that something needs to be decided sooner rather than later. And not kick down the road. Also asked to be put on the agenda, the mayor and I have been having discussions all summer about section three point three job posters. And, uh, we need to give you all a copy of that. Uh, part of this, uh, when we first, excuse me, when we first consolidated, we created it where it requires ten days notice to hire positions. Uh, mayor, subsequent mayors have had difficulty because of the timeframe of hiring. Uh, Mayor Hallwell expressed concern for me as well as Mayor Smith's concerns. The concerns are, is that by the time that we finish the ten-day advertising, people moved on and received another job. And so, uh, I, I asked for us to have an earnest discussion about what timeframe. And they said, you may not want to change it at all. But that's something that, uh, he would like you all to consider. He's talked to me about it several times. And, uh, it's something that, that we may look at a more contemporary method of advertising and keeping the advertising that you have to some degree. Uh, but the issue that he's expressed to me and other department heads is by the time they finish advertising, the person has been hired somewhere else. And so the, the, the question becomes, is that effective? And is it something that you still want to hold on to as far as the ten-day requirement? But that's a discussion that needs to be had that, uh, with the council versus just with me. Uh, but he's talked to me about at least ten times since he's been mayor. And, uh, uh, I just wanted to bring that forward as we, as you could, considering, uh, this, this, this possibility of new position. Uh, section of three point of, of your, uh, it is employee handbook, which mandates at least ten days advertising uh, for, um, he was discussing with me whether you all could reduce to five days or something, less one week or internet, but that's not for me. It's a policy of the city council to determine, uh, whether this is effective and how, how, uh, it works properly. Uh, but there are some other updates that we'll discuss later this year with the personnel, but I yield because I don't want to hold you time and all the hours late.
Mr. Valley, before you go.
Sir.
Mr. Val.
Yes, sir.
When the golf course, uh, the golf course, we, what we did was the people who took responsibility of golf course, they decided they wanted to keep their, their people that they had. They, they brought their own people in to cut the grass a special way out there. So that was, that was in their contract when we get, when we uh, let them take on the responsibility of golf course, that they would, they got their own people back in their own machines. It's like six of them. Mr. Walter Simpson, Mr. Mr. I've got, Mr. Schiffler and a couple of other people.
I understand.
They, they took their responsibility.
I understand, but all I'm saying is, at some point that contract will, will come to an end. And when the contract comes to an end, that's also something to consider for us. But yes, and while, while they had the contract, it's still city, city property. Still, it's still owned by the citizens of the city of Helena, what's home. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Other questions or comments about the resolution?
Yeah, I, I really hate to come in at this point because it's after eight o'clock, but uh, since it's coming back, I want to put this in every, in, in everybody's mind. And this is my position on it. Since I've been here, uh, I don't know that anybody has been a greater, you know, supporter of parks than I have. And that's from both city and, uh, A and P, uh, doing things that we've done for parks over the years. And, uh, there's one thing that I learned about parks and recreation. Um, and that's because I've also served on the board for the Boys and Girls Club for a number of years, not actively in the last few years, but um, shortly after its creation, Jason Rollit was the director and all the success they had. Um, you know, we had a, we had a contract with them at one point in time and, and I was, uh, really in, in favor of that. Uh, but not just because I was on the board, it's because I learned from that experience how highly trained they are, how highly coordinated they are and specialized with programs. And it opened my eyes to the fact that you can't just open a department of people and give them titles and say, you're now Parks and Recreation. And really, really, really be productive and successful. Now, it looks like you are from the outside looking in. But my experience taught me a whole lot about programs and the training that we have to have in order to run successful programs. And it is for that reason that I supported the last go-around that we had where they actually worked out of the Armory. And I guess there were some issues with the building and they pulled out of it. But at this point, I haven't been in favor of reopening Parks and Recreation. at this point, I haven't been in favor of reopening Parks and Recreation because I think I came to believe that it was just a waste of money. Uh, we had some good people, and I'm not, I'm not really, I'm not trying to disparage the people who tried to operate as Parks and Recreation Directors, because some of them did a wonderful job with what they had. But if you don't have the proper training and resources to throw at the department itself, you just fill in a position with a body. And just opening up a building and rolling out basketballs and, and, and jump ropes and all that kind of stuff, I, I think is not really in our best interest, it seems like it sometimes, but I think it's more window dressing than anything, people get to say the building is open and my kids can go down there. But I don't think it's really effective, and so, uh, we talked about this back at budget time, I think you mentioned it, uh, mayor mentioned it. And I said then, and it may have washed over everybody's ears, but I'll say it again. This has to have a real plan in place before you do it, if it's really, really, really going to be successful. And what that means is, who are the people going to be? What level of training are they going to have? What types of programs are you going to have, and where's the funding for, for the programs going to come from? Because if you just open up a building again, I say, and put somebody over there and say, hey, you're in charge, throw some stuff together. It looks nice, but it really, 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 there's another level of this that you're not even touching and not engaging in. And at some point, it just becomes, I think, a waste of money. So I would encourage everyone to really, really think about that as you go forward on it, and, and if you, if you read between the lines, I'm not a supporter at this point for all those reasons. But I'm not trying to encourage or discourage anybody. Uh, Parks and Recreation Programs, I think, are always necessary to have some sort of program, some sort of facilities in place. Uh, I think it enhances the, uh, quality of life for our citizens, and so I think it's something that we certainly have to consider. But I want us to put our best foot forward when we do it, and, and I'm not in favor of just throwing somebody in a position and saying we have a department. Uh, my two cents now, I'll, I'll be quiet.
Other members of the council.
Well, I think, um, opening up the facility or opening up the position is a great idea, I do agree with, um, Mr. Ethel on some things as far as having a plan, I think there should be a plan. I don't, uh, agree to just, you know, having it open just for basketball, but uh, perhaps we will have somebody, be able to hire somebody with training, you know, maybe we can come up with uh, some way, or maybe they have a solution to where we can get resources from. Along with hopefully we will one day be approved to get those grants that we apply for, I mean, just looking into the future. Hopefully, you know, we can get it to where it needs to be one day. It won't be right now, but I'm sure if we work towards it, we can get there. Just thinking positive.
Other members of the council. It is getting late, and, uh, I mean, I'll certainly take a motion in a second on the resolution. We couldn't do it until, uh, as Mr. Valley pointed out, until we amended the uh, base pay, which wouldn't be able to happen probably until next Tuesday. But I'll, I'll stop there for just a second, see if there's a, a motion or a second. Okay, so we'll try to put that on the agenda, Ms. Sandy, with, uh, base pay ordinance next Tuesday. My, my only, uh, comment would be that, um, when I was campaigning, I heard a lot of outcry about the need to have a real Parks and Recreation, Recreation Program again. Um, Mr. Ethel, you're a busy man, and I'm busy. We need a person as a coordinator, not as a department director, it's not what I'm calling it. I'm not even calling it the Parks Department at this point, just a coordinator. Even when Boys and Girls Club were trying to use the, uh, the North Helena Community Center, they were supposed to be members, uh, or at least that's what I'm told, that they, they had to be a certain age, they had to have certain, they had to have a membership to Boys and Girls Club. I'm a big supporter, I believe, I agree with everything you said about the Boys and Girls Club. Please don't misunderstand that. But they made the decision not to stay there for a lot of reasons, I think. Part of it might have been, you know, we did lose Jason, and tragically. But long before there was a Boys and Girls Club, that hell, North Helena Community Center was there, was open, and had people who worked there that kept it open and allowed anybody to walk in there and use it, and it was supervision by the city, not leased to anybody, by the city to make sure that, uh, that the facilities weren't abused, that fights didn't break out, all that kind of stuff, it was tremendously popular. Uh, it was opened under, I believe, Mayor Kelly, uh, and then my mother reopened it. And broadened it, and then I think addition to the, of the bike park is really incredible, we've made a lot of, we fixed up a lot of stuff in there, and it's being used. Really needed it open all the time, right now, especially while they're out of school. Uh, to give young people something to do, and we need somebody to be in charge of getting those nets back up on basketball courts. We need somebody to stay on us to make sure we're doing what we ought to be doing as far as keeping the grass smooth and all that stuff, we need a coordinator. That's the bottom, and that's what this does, so my response would be, this is not, we need a plan. We do, and we need people who are trained and all of that, I agree with that. But more than any of that, we need somebody who's going to do that. And that's what this position would do. Otherwise, it's just going to rock along like it has for the last few years, and that's not acceptable to anybody. So I'm open to any suggestions, but I do think we need an actual person to do this, it's that, it's important enough that we have a person whose job it is to work with us, including you, Mr. Ethel, and your experience, and everybody else, to build a proper Parks and Recreation Department that would be effective and would work, and in the meantime, provides a resource for these kids. We need something to do in our city, there's no swim pool this year, we've had COVID, it's been tough on everybody. Um, we need somebody dedicated to that. I'll stop my speech, we'll put, put it on the agenda for Tuesday and, and move on. Before we close, if there's no objection, I know Ms. Ramsey really would like to do this ordinance. Uh, waiving bidding on purchase of H fact units for fire stations, ninety-eight, plus a seven oh four, Cherry. Do we have that in the packet now?
No, sir, uh, Mr. uh, Valley will have it for us Tuesday.
Okay, all right, so I guess we'll move that also. I'll just open it up to the council, do y'all want to move everything on here till next Tuesday, what would y'all like to do from here?
Yes, I will.
Anybody else? If there's no objection, because of the lightness, it's about eight-thirty, we'll move all these items to the Tuesday agenda. Uh, and the King Biscuit, the permit pending, whatever y'all do tomorrow on that. Is there any objection to that? Okay. All right, uh, is there a motion to adjourn? Ms. Davis, Ms. Crockett, please adjourn, adjourn, uh, I'm a favor, sir.
I.
All opposed. All right, Ms. Jordan, thank y'all very much, we'll see you next week or someday tomorrow.